Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, and here to give another drought update. And with this also the annual Water Supply Management Report, which as you may recall is a backwards-looking document of what happened in water year 17. So today's presentation, I think the last time we spoke with council was in early December, so it's been awhile. And we've got quite a bit to go over. So we'll be going over the current drought status, how the community is doing with demand, our current water supply strategy, water supply status, just a little bit about the Thomas Fire debris flows and what Water Resources staff have been doing with that. And then we'll finish with the annual Water Supply Management Report. So rainfall, as you might expect, is very low. The only real rainfall we got was the May 9th, May 8th, 9th rain event, which came down pretty heavy, which actually did, we did have some flows in our local creeks and including the San Inez River. We saw just a little bit of flow while it was raining. Not sure how much of that was actually water, but it did have a lot of something getting into our reservoirs. So we are 31% of normal at Gibraltar, 42 at Kachuma, and 25% of normal for this time, for this date. As far as countywide or statewide, we haven't seen the state update this graphic really to recognize, I think, where we are right now, which is we're getting into that extreme drought situation. And again, noting that this graphic doesn't really get down to the local level. I mean, Santa Maria is in a much better situation groundwater-wise than we are, and so it doesn't recognize that. But we are still in a very significant drought condition right now. Right now NOAA looking how three months, February, March, and April, are predicting below-average rainfall for the remainder of the year. So far, they've been accurate. Again, we have a high pressure sitting offshore that is kind of pushing all those storms north into Oregon and Washington. So demand status, this continues to be the silver lining to this drought. The community hit 32% conservation for December, which is really right on par with what we were hoping for. And our running average continues to stick right around 40%. As a reminder, our conservation target for this community is 30%. Revenues remain strong. And one of the things that we're seeing in, at least with November, December, is that we're seeing more same amount of water we were predicting, but more Tier 2 and Tier 3 usage. Again, this is an unaudited, we haven't gone through and really got into the details on this, but we expect it's because November and December have been unusually dry that we're seeing more people getting into that Tier 2 and Tier 3 range. But hopefully, we'll have more as we get a little further into this and have some more time to look at this. But I think what's nice and has been concerning us is the community has been exceeding our conservation goal than we were concerned about revenues. As far as our 12-month running average, again, conservation is sitting right around 9,100 acre-feet a year is what we're trending at. Again, that's water demands that we haven't seen. I would go, I'm trying to find these numbers. I think you'd have to go back to the 50s to find when this community was using that amount of water. I mean, this is really extraordinary how much conservation is going on right now, and it's fantastic. And it's really buying us more time to deal with this unprecedented drought.
Okay, so my name's Kelly Dyer. I'm the Water Supply Manager. And I wanted to take a moment to walk through this chart. It's something we've shown every month since 2014 as part of our drought updates. But I wanted to give a little more background on where it comes from. This chart originated from our 2011 Long-Term Water Supply Plan, which was a policy document for how we respond to droughts. And the design drought in that plan was from 1947 to 52. And to be conservative, the city added an extra sixth year of drought for planning purposes. What we've experienced is a much drier condition, and it's also a much longer drought. This is much more severe than what we had planned for. And what we've been doing is using our plan, our Long-Term Water Supply Plan policies, to adaptively manage our supplies based on our current conditions. So when Kachuma stops spilling, that's when we know we might be entering into a drought condition. The last time that Kachuma spilled was May of 2011. So that's when we began tracking our water supplies. And in 2014 was when we realized it's time to declare officially that we're in a drought. And conditions have became more and more serious with the Stage 3 drought condition. We're currently in year seven of the drought. And we've extended our supply projections out three more years. And so you can see, we are projecting a shortage out in 2020. And we'll be coming back to council in spring of 2017 to address that shortage after we know more about what happens with our rainfall and inflows this spring. So looking at the current water year, starting from the bottom up, the purple is our recycled water. The dark and medium blues are Kachuma supplies. The light blue is Gibraltar. The green is our state water allocation. Orange, our supplemental water purchases. And the light green is desalination. And then for the current year, as well as the next two years, that's based on the 30% conservation target, which the community has been exceeding. So Gibraltar reservoir is currently at about 41% of capacity. That's around 2,000 acre-feet. We did receive some inflows in this recent storm event, but we don't know how much of that was actually water and how much was mud and other sediment. We are able to treat Gibraltar water. However, we have other sources that are better water quality. We do see water quality impacts resulting from all the fires in the Gibraltar watershed. So it takes usually about three weeks for the sediment to settle out before it's good water quality that we would start diverting again. So we did shut down deliveries just ahead of the storm. We have not resumed them at this point. We have been using other sources. Kachuma is at about 39% of capacity, which is 75,000 acre-feet. If conditions continue to be dry this spring, we're, the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board will need to make a decision this summer, roughly sometime this summer, to reinstall the pilings for the barge. So the barge may be coming back if conditions continue to be dry. We did receive about 600 acre-feet of inflow. It did not have as much of an effect on the Kachuma water quality, I think because it's a larger reservoir. So we didn't have any effect on our ability to treat Kachuma water. I do want to mention, though, there were water quality impacts. It's just that we've improved our treatment capabilities over the years so that it didn't affect our ability to treat it. Com had installed a log boom around our intake tower at Kachuma, and that was effective in preventing any debris or damage to the intake. And as mentioned, we did have water quality impacts, but it didn't affect our treatment capability. There were water quality impacts to the Hilton Creek area, and 13 omikus were found dead. And the reason this is important to us is because omikus is a genetic term for steelhead trout, and it also includes rainbow trout. The steelhead are an endangered species. And there's a biological opinion for the Kachuma project, which affects our water supplies. So the water quality did affect the fish at Kachuma. We have had several fires. We've had the Thomas Fire, the Woodyer Fire, and the Ray Fire. And those impacts are going to be ongoing for several years. It affects our water supplies from Kachuma, Gibraltar, and state water. And as mentioned, it also affects the steelhead habitat. So I wanted to take a moment to talk about our response to the water quality challenges. Turbidity and organic material are the main challenges with treating the surface water. And we are currently seeking FEMA funding to offset the higher treatment costs. But this isn't our first fire. We had the Zaca Fire, which burned 120,000 acres of the Gibraltar watershed. And we have had water quality impacts since then. So our CATER water treatment staff are excellent, and they're up for facing the water quality challenges. Some of the improvements that have been made over the years are the addition of ozone pretreatment, an activated carbon feed system, enhanced filter backwash capability, which allows for continuous cleaning of the filters, pretreatment in Laurel Reservoir. All of these things have helped us to position the city to be able to treat more challenging water quality. We are collaborating with our neighboring water agencies. CATER Water Treatment Plant also serves Montecito and Carpinteria. And for the city's adaptive management strategy, we, going into the storm, will keep Laurel Reservoir full, which is on this side of the mountains. And that provides us flexibility operationally for several weeks. We can operate CATER for several weeks without diverting in the wintertime when our demands are low. So that gives us some time before we have to take the water down. And we also have a diverse water supply portfolio where we can use other water sources. Right now, our groundwater wells are offline, but we are exercising them regularly in case we need to bring them back online because of water quality issues. For imported water, we continue to maximize the delivery of state water to Kachuma. It's about 280 acre-feet per month for the city. We have about 2,000 acre-feet of water stored at Kachuma and about 1,400 that's stored at San Luis Reservoir. The initial allocation from the State Department of Water Resources was 15%. It went up to 20%, I believe, yesterday. So that's an additional allocation to the city. However, it's not enough to keep our pipe flowing full to Kachuma. We're trying to keep it, that's our strategy, is to keep that pipe flowing full while we're in this significant drought. And so assuming the allocation doesn't go up to 100%, we're looking for additional supplemental water purchases. 1,500 acre-feet is currently what we're looking for. That could change if conditions improve either here or in Northern California. And we'll be reassessing our actual needs in spring of 2018. City currently has a water debt of 3,300 acre-feet from previous exchanges. And that is something that we can pay off over time. We have 10 years to pay it back and potentially could apply for an extension to that if we need to. So our groundwater basins are currently at about 30% capacity based on modeling studies we've conducted with USGS. And our groundwater levels, we monitor monthly. We have about 60 monitoring wells. And the water levels are still very low. They're about where they were during the last drought in 1992. Full recovery of those water levels are expected to take about five to 10 years. And again, we're exercising our wells regularly in case we need groundwater as a backup supply.
So the DSal plant is in full operation. It's producing about 2,200 gallons per minute, which ends up being about nine acre-feet a day. Contractor still has a few items left to do. One of the things, you'll see the three treatment trains on the left of that picture there. Per the contract, they are to receive a cladding. It's kind of a shell that goes around it, basically to keep sunlight off the equipment, also keep rodents and other things out of the equipment. It's just kind of a general all-purpose, control the sound, that kind of stuff. And contractor has been struggling to find a subcontractor to do that. So that's one of the things that they're working on. And then we're also working with them on trying to set up for public tours, trying to figure out safe path. Again, we built this facility, obviously, in quick time to serve our water needs and not necessarily around how to get people around there and show them the facility. And so we've been working with them to try and figure out a way to do that safely, keeping in mind that some of these pieces of equipment have 800 pounds per square inch of pressure on these pipes. And you certainly don't want any of these things ever to have a leak or something. It could really cause some damage. And so just trying to figure out a safe way to get people in here. We're also working with IDE to figure out displays and things that we can really have the public understand, the energy impact, the environmental impact, how the filters work, and that kind of stuff. So we're working on that behind the scenes, hoping to get that ready. City TV just completed a really great informational video. Talks about the history of the plant, the technology that went into it, and I think the role it serves in our water supply. And so that's going to be going up on YouTube shortly, and will be also on our city website. And then the Prop 1 grant, unfortunately, we heard on Wednesday last week that we were not a finalist for that. We have some questions as to why. They listed a very vague explanation on the response. And so we've asked for more information, and they've yet to respond to us. There is a public comment period. Our comments are due by the 9th. And so we are very focused on getting those responses back to them. We have reached out to Senator Jackson's office, and she is extremely interested in helping us with that. In fact, she's got a call with EWR tomorrow. And so trying to get to the bottom of why, we feel like we went through the list, and we've met all the obligations. So we're a little confused about the findings on this. There is still about $50 million in grant funding for DSal projects that they still have. They only awarded $34 million of the $90-something million that they had. So it's a question of what was the issue? Was there more information that you needed? It just wasn't clear. So I'm not giving up yet, and we're still going to be pursuing this. And hopefully, next month, when I come back, we'll have some better news for you. So as far as the Thomas Fire debris flow response, I just wanted to take some time to just highlight the wonderful work of our Fire Department and Police Department involved this. But what we don't talk about, too, is what our Water Resources staff and engineering staff have been doing. So just kind of set the stage. The water, Montecito Water District was literally decimated. I mean, that system was cut up so badly from this event. I mean, pipes that had been in the ground since the '20s survived. How many storms? I mean, this truly has been a geological event in the amount of material that has been moved. And so to that, we had, the State Department of Water Resources was there to look at this. And they'd never seen a water system cut up so bad, pulled apart by the storm. And so, of course, being part of a good, strong community as we are, we wanted to get in and help. And we've had a lot of staff over there. The Sanitary District was also impacted. Just a lot of mud and debris in the system that we were able to also assist them with. But really, with the water system, we've had pushing upwards of 20 people a day over there, helping. I mean, every level, we've had engineers over there helping, basically try and put the system back either in a temporary manner or in a permanent fashion. Our distribution staff helping them with the re-pressurization. I mean, parts of the system now have been without water for three weeks. How do you get all the debris out of those? Flush it all out? And then prove to the state that the water is safe? And I mean, even last night, I got a call from the general manager saying, "I need eight more guys for tomorrow. We need to get this done." All right, well, we'll be right back. And so we've sat over our guys today and to help them because they got one last area that they need to get cleaned out. We've had people supporting the EOC. And again, we've even had, we've even been the representative for the Sanitary and Water District at the EOC, getting information, getting resources for them. And then again, our lab staff have been out there pulling the samples. I mean, we've really gone the extra mile to help them out as part of an arrangement of mutual aid, where it's part of this arrangement called Cal-Warn, in which we can come in like that. And again, our costs will pass on to the district, who will hopefully be paid by FEMA for it. But the point is, we're there to support our neighbors. And that's, I think, proud to be a part of an organization that works like that. I mean, that's been great. I think our guys have learned a lot. They've been asked to do, you know, some pretty harrowing things. We've been out there with equipment, trying to find water lines. We've been pulled off of this to look for victims. So our staff have really, and it was interesting about a lot of the staff that's been there. It's, you know, "Hey, do you want to take the day off? You've been out here for seven days straight now." "No, I don't want to take the day off. I want to be here until this is done." It's really been, I'm really proud, really proud of the team. And there's just a picture of a few of them a few days ago that have been out there tirelessly every day, helping to put this back together.
Okay, so I'm going to be discussing the 2017 Water Supply Management Report. And the purpose of this report is to summarize our water supplies used in the last year. It's a backwards-looking document. It is part of our EIR requirement for the state water project. And it's required that the city make findings that the groundwater basins are in long-term balance. So we have a very diverse water supply mix. We have Lake Kachuma, Gibraltar reservoir, which flows through Mission Tunnel. We have state water and supplemental water purchases, groundwater, desalination, recycled water, and a strong water conservation program. This chart compares our planned water supplies for 2017 versus the actual water supplies. The red bar is the extraordinary conservation that we saw from our community, which exceeded the targets last year. And that additional conservation savings allowed us to use less groundwater. We also received additional inflows to Gibraltar reservoir, which is the light blue, which helped us to reduce our use of state water, which is the orange bar. And the purple bar is our recycled water, which has been on par with what we had planned. We have been able to eliminate the blending into that system because the water quality has been meeting our requirements. So our groundwater basins, our strategy really is to base-load our groundwater supplies at a minimal amount during normal conditions. And then during droughts and emergencies, we increase our pumping, pulling water out of storage. And just wanted to walk through a little bit, this is a graphic of our groundwater basins. And our two main potable sources are Foothill Basin and Storage Unit 1. The city has three wells in the Foothill Basin, but we also share that basin with other pumpers, such as Lacumbra Mutual Water Company. In Storage Unit 1, the city has six wells. And we're the only known pumper in that basin, in the deeper aquifer. And all of our active wells, except for one Alameda well, are fed to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant, which treats for naturally occurring iron, manganese, and sulfur. And we're currently working on the design to connect Alameda to that plant as well. For Storage Unit 3, the water quality is more challenging in that basin, and it's a very small basin. The city only has one well, and it's non-potable. It's used to supplement our recycled water system as needed. And something that's really important, groundwater is a critical, all of our supplies are critical to us. But groundwater is on this side of the mountains. It's a truly local water source. And now we have DSal as well. Those are truly local drinking water supplies that would be available to us if there was ever an interruption in surface water supplies from the other side of the mountain. So our Foothill Basin, as mentioned, there's several pumpers. We do have a model that helps us to estimate the yields that's available to the city. And during droughts, that estimated yield is about 5,600 acre-feet. Last year, the city produced 382 acre-feet out of the basin. It's estimated that we have about 1,300 acre-feet remaining. The water levels are low. They're at about 1,992 levels, which was during the last drought. However, we do have data going back decades earlier that shows that water levels were actually lower previously. Storage Unit 1, the multi-year drought yield ranges between 7,000 to 13,000 acre-feet. And that depends on the amount of seawater intrusion that we would consider allowable. And so last year, our production was 956 acre-feet. And based on the drought yield of the lower end, 7,400 acre-feet, we have about 2,400 acre-feet remaining. We do continue to monitor for seawater intrusion in this basin. And we've also shifted some of our pumping farther inland. We reactivated High School and Alameda well during this drought to minimize seawater intrusion impacts. Storage Unit 3, as mentioned, does have more challenging water quality. It's not considered, we don't use it for potable water supply. There are other pumpers in that basin. The estimated safe yield available to the city is about 100 acre-feet per year. Last year, our production was 12 acre-feet. And we will continue to use our well in that basin as needed to supplement the recycled water system if our plant is down for repairs, for example. So the recommendation is that council approve and adopt the City of Santa Barbara Water Supply Management Report for the 2017 water year, finding that groundwater resources are in long-term balance in accordance with the conjunctive management element of the city's Long-Term Water Supply Plan.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Mr. Friedman and then Ms. Sneddon.
Great, thank you. First, I want to thank the public. As you've seen, you've done more than your share of conservation. And it's important that we continue to do that, as you've seen the numbers. But I really want to acknowledge the role that our residents have played in the conservation aspect. I also want to thank staff. As you can see, we're being very proactive, looking at this as a long-term strategy. And the information you've provided today shows that we are taking this seriously, and we're looking ahead because we're one of, if I correct me wrong, one of two counties that were not out of the drought last year where the rest of the state was. So we have our unique challenges here as compared to the rest of the state. Last Thursday, I went to the Central Coast Water Authority, my first meeting there. And the 15%, now 20% allocation of state water came up. But it was interesting, you showed a chart earlier, Mr. Hagmark, of we don't know what the rest of the state was. Well, they had a chart there, and the rest of the state is red or deep red in terms of rainfall for this year. So they did have some rain, but we're looking statewide at a drought. And the information we got at Central Coast Water Authority was that this year is one of the driest years ever on record. And it's just a little bit better, not much, than it was from the 2014-15 year, which was the driest on record. So we're having a lot of challenges with water. And so again, thank you for all you're doing to conserve here in Santa Barbara. If you could pull up the slide, I have a couple of questions on the groundwater slide. If you could go back, it's right after the imported water. So it's the groundwater and then desalination.
Sure.
I had a question on the recharge, the five to 10-year recharge. What are the assumptions in that? Does that mean that we don't use any groundwater and we have normal rainfall?
That was based on looking at the recovery after the last drought. We looked at our historical water levels. And we really don't pump our groundwater basins when we have surface water supplies available. So it's really little to no pumping in order for it to recover five to 10 years after that 1990s drought.
And that includes normal rainfall to refill, correct? A normal pattern, whereas if we have smaller or less rain, it's going to impact that timeline as well?
Correct, correct.
In conjunction with that, going to Kachuma, one of your slides mentioned that it's 39% full. That number is a little, I don't, I want to understand that number better because it's not that we have 39% of water available to pump. Because, could you explain that number? I'm looking at what's the Deadpool percentage? And then also, can you talk a little bit about... And then also, can you talk a little bit about the two, the two opinions, the biological opinion and the downstream water rights? Because my understanding is both of those are not finalized yet, and that actually, those three combined impact that 39% number. So can you actually clarify that number for us?
Sure, that's correct. There's a number of various accounts within Kachuma, and we're just a small slice of the pie. The city itself receives an allocation of about 82, 77 acre feet per year, and we have about 80% of that right now in Kachuma. That's all we have. So that's about 6,000 or so acre feet. And unless it rains, we really won't have any more than that. So there are other, the city is one of five Kachuma member units that receive an allocation from the Bureau of Reclamation. And outside of that, there's also downstream water rights, which I'm not sure how much is in there right now. I think they're planning to release about 8,000 acre feet this summer for the downstream releases that occur every year, to replenish the groundwater basins. And then we have fish accounts as well, as well as the minimum pool, which is about 12,000. So the city's slice is only about 6,000 out of what's in there right now.
So it's safe to say that with the unknowns for the downstream water rights and what the future from the National Marines Fishery Service for the biological opinion, that the historic levels that we've had available to us in Kachuma will probably decrease for long-term planning purposes? Is that a safe assumption to say?
The downstream water rates shouldn't affect that, but the Kachuma biological opinion has the potential, we're under, currently, we have a biological opinion from 2000 that's in place. But NIMs and reclamation are under reconsultation, and we'll be releasing a revised biological opinion, which could substantially impact the amount of water supply that's available to us.
And then I have one, well, a couple of questions, but it's the D-SAL, if you go to the D-SAL slide. So it says that the plant is in full operation. What does that mean in terms of the amount of acre feet we're able to produce? And then there would be the possibility to expand that, and what would be the process? Should, you know, worst-case scenario come forward to take to expand this, and how much, what would be the acre feet of the expansion?
So right now, it's producing about nine acre feet a day, which would get us to that 3,125 acre feet a year. The expansion is something that we anticipate talking about in the spring, once we know kind of where we are. We went through this exercise last year in anticipation of continued dry, and we had a break. But we do have some costs that we can bring back. Again, we had gotten a proposal from IDE, the contractor who's operating it and who constructed it, but that was good for a period of time. We'd have to have them take a look at it. They've now demobilized from the site, so they'd have to bring in new staff or bring people back and do all this. So we will be refreshing those numbers, and we can bring that back as part of the long-term discussion about what we want to do looking out to 2020.
Thank you. And again, for the public, both in the room and listening, you can see we have a lot of challenges. So thank you for all the work you're doing, and continue to do that as we do our diligence here to come up with a plan to address the drought as it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sneddon.
Thank you. I just really want to commend your far-thinking plans, and we have this incredibly diversified water portfolio due to your planning. And any one of those could fail us, and we would still be okay. And I know that's taken a lot of long-term planning, and in some areas where groundwater is completely drawn down, or relying solely on D-SAL or only on state water, and I think it's really comforting to know that we have such a diversified portfolio. And then just another thing, Mr. Hagmark, you just made that passing comment about working in partnership with Montecito, and it was much more than that. You did so much, and the Public Works Department, and immediately going out there with equipment and people and manpower and woman power and all the forces that we have to bring and to help. And I'm just really, really proud of that partnership, and thank you for taking that initiative.
Mr. Hart.
Yeah, I want to second that. It was, without even being asked, you were there and ready, and it was an impressive mutual response from all the different agencies, but your help for Montecito, I think, was particularly helpful at that moment in time. One question I had has to do with the December conservation levels. You said it was 32%. What was October and November? Is it trending down from the 40%? Or was that kind of a big drop into December?
Yeah, we're seeing, if we pulled it up, we're starting to see a trend with it heading down. As we typically see this time of year, it starts to, as you can see, it starts to follow, I see trending down. It starts to follow what we anticipated from the community, given that there's less discretionary water use that we have in those, as we get into the cooler months.
So you're thinking, you're thinking that this new level of 32% is probably the new sustainable level, and that was the target we were hoping for. It was sticky initially, it was staying at 40%. You're thinking now that we might be at that level and stay in there?
I don't know. I think this community is going to continue to conserve, and I think we're seeing in the winter months, a lower conservation, still a really impressive number, but I don't put it past this community that they'll be back up in the 40% by the time the summer comes around again. I just, I've decided not to bet against this community more when it comes to how much they're going to conserve. There's, the conservation here is just incredible.
And that's directly related to the water supply chart that you show, where you have the deficit in year 20. If it is closer to 40 than 30, that will go away.
That will pretty much address a lot of that shortage, yes.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, the supplemental supplies, that means we buy it from other parts of the state, so there must be some opportunity for that?
Yes.
Because it's rained in other parts of the state, or how would you answer?
Madam Mayor, it's very dry in other parts of the state, but the Central Coast Water Authority is the lead on pursuing these supplemental water purchases and exchange. They work on behalf of the city. And they have found some potential farmers north of the Delta that may be interested in foregoing planting this year and selling their water instead, but will also be looking for exchanges with other state water contractors as well. So it's really a case by case on who may have water, but we have, we believe that we will be able to find some opportunities to evaluate.
I see no speaker slips. A motion would be in order. Mr. Hart, your lights on.
I would move item B in the staff recommendation to approve and adopt the City of Santa Barbara Water Supply Management Report for 2017 water year, finding that groundwater resources are in long-term balance in accordance with the conjunctive management element of the city's long-term water supply plan.
Is there a sec? Did you say second?
Yes, I did, sorry.
Great. And since you read that so well, I don't think the clerk needs to repeat it, but that would be the motion. Any discussion to the motion, Mr. Dominguez?
I wanted to start by thanking both of our staff members for these incredible reports in our, both the city's Water Supply Management Report, which is several pages with full-color graphics on some of the tables. So I can tell you, I went to a lot of effort to make these very elaborate and comprehensive. And then to echo what people have said earlier, your support of the Montecito Water District has been amazing. Words can't describe it. I spoke with Nick Turner, I met Nick when he first started at Montecito. We were attending an event in Oxnard at their water district. And so I called just to leave him a short message, just, you know, encouraging him during this difficult time and thanking him for working hard. And he called me back, and I said, "Please don't call me back. I know you're busy." But he called back because he wanted to thank me for all the great work you guys have been doing and your staff. So let me just pass that right back to you guys. Just really, I think, has made the difference night and day to their staff and obviously to their residents, who are really at a time of need. So thanks again for that great work, and thank you for keeping our water supply secured. And I wouldn't say looking good, because Mother Nature hasn't been really helpful this year, but at least looking secured for the next two years. And I'm sure you'll figure out a way to deal with the third year out. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems we're in agreement, so let's, we can forego a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you, water staff. Next-